This is the Radio Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, April 17th, 2019. On the agenda tonight is called, called to order miscellaneous of minutes, March 20th, 2019, and a public hearing on Michael Bontos' Rowley Auto Parts at 7:05 p.m. until after an application received March 6th, 2019, from Michael Bontos, DBA Rowley Auto Parts. Case number 1906, it's 7:30. That case is going to be drawn, so... After that, we will adjourn and... So, I'll follow the getting to order. We've all had a chance to read the minutes.
Yes.
Any discussion or corrections or additions? The motion has been made to accept the minutes of March 20th. Second. The motion's been made in second. All in favor, say you're finally saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We've received an application from Michael Bontos, DBA Rowley Auto Parts, case number 19.07. This hearing is now over. Public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion. I ask cooperation and the following procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard after the application is presented and the board members have asked questions. This hearing is being videoed and audiotaped. Therefore, when you address the board, begin by stating your name and address. Speak slowly, audibly, and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. The purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear and consider the pertinent facts relating to the application and to approve or with conditions, judge, deny. Before hearing from the public, the applicant will be allowed to present a case and the board members shall ask questions and comments. If any member of the board has any conflict of interest in this case.
No.
Okay. None. Okay. The public knows this application was posted at Town Hall, sent a certified list of buyers and interests in the published in the Town Column on April 3rd, 2019, and April 10th, 2019, in Reader's Falls. Case number 19.07. A public hearing to be held at Town Hall Annex 39 Central Street on Wednesday, April 17th, at 7:05 p.m. until after an application received March 6th, 2019, from Michael Bontos, DBA Rowley Auto Parts. Application is appealing Inspector Building's decision. The property is located at 164 Boxer Road in the Outland District and is shown on excessive maps to block 9 and 10. At the public hearing, members of the public may ask questions and present evidence that supports either the approval or denial of this petition. The application is as follows. It's traces of land and buildings located at 164 Boxer Road. Applicant Michael Bontos, DBA Rowley Auto Parts, 15 Independence Drive, Salem, New Hampshire. He is the owner of the property. Is that correct?
Code.
Huh?
My brother's property.
Okay. The party is agreed for the review of the decision made by the building inspector. License says is map number 2, block numbers 9 and 10. deed is recorded as registered deeds, book number 6106, page 110. As a previous variant, special permit under the zoning lease, everything requested. Yes. Description, proposed work and use, class 3 auto auction. The reason for this application is appealing to Inspector's decision. Applicant requests waiver to submit existing plans with new construction on property dated March 4th, 1919. Michael Bontos. And the permit and license claim is once fulfilled, Rowley Auto Parts appealed 164 Boxer Road. That's block 2, block 9 and 10. Treasuries about and right to property, the water department signed off. Okay, I have a letter dated February 20th, 2019, Town of Rowley, from the building inspector, Dan Moskibantos. On February 13th, 2019, I issued a cease and desist to a worker of Copart at your property at 164 Boxer Road. I did this after I received a written complaint regarding your illegal use of your property, specifically violating your ZVA decision, case number 15.07, regarding storage of junk vehicles not registrable. Furthermore, after viewing the site with the police chief and fire chief, you do not have the knock box on your gate containing the required by the decision or the 25-foot space between rows of cars. Also, the car's fire exceeded the number allowed and estimated to 700 to 1,000 on sight. I verbally explained to you and your violations in my office on February 14th and told you about your right to appeal my cease and desist within 30 days. I am notifying you and writing by this letter along with a cease and desist notice. Okay, we have a letter from the board selecting to review this application after the meeting last night. Did I have any comments on it? There's a letter here from Municipal Water Department. Armed members of the zoning board of appeals. In order to ensure the safety of the water supply, the water department would like for the owner of the property at 164 Boxer Road to be required to test the soil for possible contaminants from the vehicles. The test samples should be taken within 30 days after completion of evacuation of vehicles. The soil should be sampled in two or three locations between the former storage area and road number 3. The department would like this done for the granting of any other license, change of use, or transfer of the property. We have a letter from the fire department. On February 13th, 2019, I visited 164 Boxer Road with the building inspector, Ken Ward, to investigate the storage of wrecked vehicles on the property. I observed a large number of wrecked vehicles parked in a manor where there was no clear path of travel to get to all of the vehicles. During the time I was on the property, there were flatbed trucks preparing to drop off three of more wrecked vehicles. The building inspector informed the employee on the site that there would be no more vehicles dropped off and a cease and desist order was given. On August 3rd, 2015, I met with Ms. Bontos, the property owner, to discuss the ZVA case 1507, and the concerns that the fire department had with the parking of new vehicles on the property. It copied my letter to the ZVA detached. During the site visit, the following was discussed. Boardly parking of vehicles with clear paths between rows. A spill containment plan with caches to spill containment supplies. Regular mowing of weeds to keep chances of natural color fires from spreading to vehicles. How vehicles were to be brought on-site. Given the fire department a key to be put in a knock box on the property so the key facility would be on-site. My recommendations to the ZVA at the time were the following. I don't want a 250 car stored on the property at any given time with no parking along fence line. A regular mowing program is done to keep brushers weeds from growing into the parking area and fence line. Two distinctive caches that spill containment supplies so that any spill may be quickly contained. The knock box key security box is located on the gate so that all the parking vehicles will have access to the gate key, which is not the case. On the February visit, there was snow on the ground, however. The following was observed. One, there was no clear path between rows of vehicles. There was no spill containment supplies visible at all from the site. There were no new cars on the site. All cars observed were wrecked vehicles. There was no knock box on the gate to the property. I am of the opinion that the conditions for the 2015 have not been followed. If you have any questions, please, please hesitate to call me. The reinspection department. The board members. On the morning of February 13th, 2019, I received a written complaint from Curtis Bryant along with fanciful photos regarding 164 Boxer Road. After reviewing the photos and complaints, I notified the police chief and fire chief and did a site inspection on the property with them. On my site visit, I saw between 700 and 1,000 cars classified as not registrable. I spoke with a worker for the company called Copart, which was leasing the property from the owner, Mr. Michael Bontos. I notified this person to contact his office at once and wrote out a cease and desist to him. There were clear violations of the condition of ZVA decision, case number 1507. There was one. There were, they were, these were, number one, no storage of any motor vehicles outside which are not verifiably registrable, have junk or salvage titles or otherwise be inoperable. Number six, there was not a minimum 25-foot separation between each set of double rows. There were no double rows. The fire department could not access the most, to most interior vehicles. Eight, Mr. Bontos, DBA Rowley Auto Parts would not be engaged in auto sales for auto retail business or any other business other than one which enables vehicles to be stored on the property for any other purpose than resale. Nine, there were no containment systems on-site as required by the fire department. I sent Mr. Bontos a letter dated February 20th, 2019, stating that I have ceased and desist was issued along with the company's cease and desist. As of this date, I have not spoken with him. I have received, however, a copy of his appeal to the ZVA. It's my understanding that Copart has been removing cars from the property with my permission. I have visited the site on numerous occasions and the cars are disappearing daily. I have been assured by Copart that no cars have been driving, however, and Mr. Bryant has insisted that they are. I told him to call the police department to verify it is to take pictures because I cannot sit up there and watch the day of the site daily. The pictures I have supplied here, I believe, will justify the fact that this property was not used to store cars for more than two years, in the 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008 range, to be exact. The fact that Mr. Bontos has licenses from the selectmen does not mean that the manor is being used to store any vehicles moved to use under those time frames. I further believe that because of municipal water supply protection district which created in 1995, this use is definitely not allowable, his grandfather. I'm going to take the ball and reading that. And we have a copy of the previous decision. Okay. I'll recover the whole thing just in case. Okay. I know what I said. If you have any questions. You're there. Copart. Okay. Mr. Bontos, the attorney or...
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Sorry, if I stand, is that going to mess up the camera?
No, no.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, my name's Peter Ross and I represent Michael Bontos who is to my left. And we were here four years ago discussing a, the issuance of a special permit. Now, by way of a quick review, Mr. Bontos and his family has owned this site on 164 Boxer Road for over 45 years, and for that whole time, it has been licensed for the storage, a class 3 license, the storage of junk cars for their sale, and automobile auction. Four years ago, there was a similar complaint, and at that time, Mr. Bontos had an op, a different kind of an opportunity, as you will remember, to store new cars. And it was determined, it is my memory, that that needed a special permit. And that special permit was issued in 2015, and that's the decision we're talking about now being violated. Now, I'm going specifically now to the requirement that there's no junk cars being stored. Addressing that directly, that's a condition of the special permit which allows the storage of new cars. The storage of new cars was very lucrative to Mr. Bontos but ended in August of 2017. Therefore, it was no longer being used after that time. So, the condition that there'd be no junk cars stored is not a condition that attaches to the land itself, it's a condition that attaches to the special permit. And for the basis of that, I have a case. Rosenfeld versus the Zoning Board of Appeals amended. And in this specific case, it's talking about a variance, but it's the same principle. Because the variances remain in effect, the plaintiffs contend, the conditions imposed by the variances likewise remain in effect and operate to preclude the proposed use. It sounds like our case. The argument rests on a fundamental misconception. The variances furnish relief from otherwise applicable requirements of the zoning bylaw, and the conditions imposed by the variances operate as preconditions to the enjoyment of that relief. However, they do not operate independently to limit the permissible use of the property. If I may, if you'd like a copy for you.
Yeah, you can make your copy.
I don't want to make it, I just want to give it to you. In other words...
We submitting this as a program as a...
Yes. That's the legal research I did on this particular issue. The idea that Mr. Bontos is restricted from storing junk cars on the site is only as a condition of the special permit which is no longer being used. He has a long history of, as a nonconforming use of having junk cars there, something like 45 years. And if I may continue, this, I believe, was a subject of some discussion with this board four years ago. And we were concerned at the time, and I, my memory is that we discussed it, and I'm going to show you what, I think I got some evidence for it, that we didn't want to come out of four years ago with the idea we were giving away the nonconforming use that existed at that time. Now, what, I have a copy for everyone on the board, is a draft decision that we were given first time from this board four years ago. If I may, can I hand it out?
Do you want to see it?
If you look on page five, and this is the, I'm going to, this is, I got this from the board four years ago. It says, under Ford's finding, paragraph one, the owner will not store or allow to be stored any vehicles which are not verifiably registrable, have junk or salvage titles or otherwise be inoperable. And Mr. Bontos and I had a discussion with the board at the time. Couldn't that language be changed? Because that would mean giving up the nonconforming use that the family had, had generated up till that time. And so, the change, and you can see the change from that to the decision that was ultimately decided, it included the word "outside," so the, as a result of discussion with this board, there was going to be allowed the storage of those cars inside as a condition of this special permit. So, putting it all together, Mr. Chairman and members. As a part of the decision four years ago, salvageable titles, cars with salvageable titles could be stored on the site as long as it was inside.
Inside what?
There's a building there.
You couldn't park anything in that thing, it was a workshop. You couldn't put cars in that building.
Well, I think you could, not many, I'll grant you.
Were there going to be midgets? It was small, if I remember, I could be wrong. I could be put inside that building.
Yeah, to the left, there was, on the right, there might have been a little...
That's the building?
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a garage door, right? On the left.
Wait, that's because it's Florida, that's...
The left is the garage door.
If I, I don't want to give it anybody's way.
When was that? I walked in, you couldn't even walk in there.
When was that picture taken?
I don't know, I just saw my picture.
That's why, well, I don't like, like, whatever they did to sell my image. 2012.
2012.
The building's still there. Both buildings still there?
No.
Only one, right? That's what I thought, yeah.
Last time I was in that building was when we were discussing this case and so forth and whatnot, and it was very obvious that no business had been taking, had taken place in that building for quite a while. The ceiling was coming down. It was a mess. I think my memory kind of jived with yours, Mr. Chairman. But the point being, we were concerned about the preservation of the nonconforming use. And we didn't want to give away and have an extended time period because of non-storage of salvageable cars and give away the nonconforming use. And that was a discussion among this board, I think, and my client and me at that time. I think at the time, if I'm not mistaken, that he was allowed to have, he was supposed to have a fence up there to block off the new cars from, well, where that tractor is right now. It should have been a fence.
There was a fence, so...
Is there a fence along there somewhere?
There's a, there's, is it like that? There's a fence around the whole property, on the inside.
Right there, see it?
See it like that?
Okay.
That fence...
That fence is there now?
That fence has been there for 20, 30 years. If you go look at the shape, there's a shape of a seven, I believe, on the property, on the inside. Can you go to a...
Now, shrink it down more.
There's a fence, people are going around. There's a fence that encompasses, see that shape of a seven right there? That is all fenced in, on the inside.
Okay. And the premises are screened from public view?
Yep.
And where, where are the junk car, cars now?
Where are they? Where are they now? No, on, on the, on the map, where, where are they?
Would it be installed now? Would it, would it, would it be installed now?
No. You've been using, you've been using your property to store junk cars. Where, where have they been?
On the hot tub, there's, there's a couple of cars on the hot tub. Right now.
In the, in the seven, I...
They're in the whole, they're in the whole seven.
We got a, we got a fenced-in area with a building in it.
Yes.
Where are the cars parked?
As of when? When I had it? Oh, the company that's there right now.
The company that's there right now. Mr. Chairman.
The whole thing. Mr. Chairman. I think the relevant time is when Mr. Ward issued the cease and desist.
All right.
They're inside that, that shape of that seven right there.
They were where?
Inside that area right there, you see on the, on the picture right there.
It's more like an L, correct? You see, it's upside down, so you might be confused what you're talking about. So, it's the whole L shape now.
There's a photo.
Here.
In the package.
Right there.
The cars are running where the, supposedly the offices, is that where they are now?
I don't know if, I don't know if there's any there now.
Yes, recent photos show cars all over that property still.
Okay, I, I just don't know.
And that's two months after the cease and desist.
That's what I'm asking the question. Where, where, where was Copart parking the cars? Where, where, where was Copart parking the cars?
They have this, this area here, this area right here.
Okay, that's...
Why is that? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if Copart is a lessee, that's a co, that's a per se violation of the agreement, of the, of the decision. No lesssees. Copart's a lessee, nothing.
That's an additional violation. What is, what, Mr. Rosen, what is the relationship of Mr. Bontos to Copart?
Yeah.
They leased, they leased the property from there.
Okay. And they leased it since two seventeen, you say?
No.
Since when?
Beginning of the year, this year.
Beginning of two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
So you're saying a photograph depicting a thousand vehicles appeared and disappeared in the last, what month is this?
That was requested.
Eighty, ninety days?
That was requested by, by the town.
I'm sorry?
That was requested by the town.
Okay, I'm still looking for confirmation on that. January two thousand nineteen is when that existed?
Yes, so early December of two thousand eighteen.
Eighteen.
At the very end, maybe one weekend of that.
And when did the relationship with the prior company end?
With the New Cars?
Yes.
August of two thousand seventeen.
Okay. All I wanted to say is, in conclusion, it's, the special permit that was issued in two thousand fourteen is of no force anymore because what was allowed is not happening. Yes, the terms of that are technically being violated, but it's no longer in force. And there is a existing grandfathered use for this kind of storage going back forty-five years. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to have anything to say? Or events?
My name is James Gallagher, I represent Mr. Bryant, who submitted the original complaint in February. I just want to point a couple of things out to the board, which I, and I'm sure you realize this, but if you look at your earlier decision even, you note in the decision itself that there had been a lapse of the pre-existing nonconforming use, which it's pretty established, it's a well-established black letter law that, once you have a nonconforming use that lapses, you can't resurrect it. So I think the statement by the applicant that there is a pre-existing nonconforming use is really, it's a non-starter. And I mean, I have, I don't want to burn you with more paper, I have case law that says that, but it is a well-established legal precedent. And once that nonconforming use goes away, it can't come back. And just to point out, there's pictures, and I think there's right over there, that's what it looked like, I think, in February.
Which one do I have those of, the New Cars?
That's, no, those are, those are the junk cars from Copart. That's February twenty nineteen. That's February twenty nineteen, yes.
Those are, they're called junk cars.
Those are junk cars, all these cars are junk cars?
Yes.
Junk cleaning.
You want to look at them?
Being salvaged, sold a salvage title through the Copart auto sales.
So what, basically, what we're going, what we're going to find from a new car parking lot, parking lot for resale to a junkyard.
That's correct. And if you look, again, it's in the bylaws, in the water protection, I believe it's subsection P, which specifically prohibits this kind of use in this area of Raleigh. So again, I think that this use now, because it's now, it's not a nonconforming grandfathered use, it is specifically prohibited use. So it can't be, not only can it not be resurrected, it's actually specifically prohibited.
Yes, just briefly, those cars are in various states of disrepair, and, my name is Curtis Bryant, eighty bucks a broom. If you went onto the Copart website, which is some examples in the packet, you could see these cars all up for sale in various states of intactness. Some for, you know, a salvage car that just needed minor repairs. Some had biohazards and chemical hazards, as stated on the website, again, in your packet. Others were just for parts. Copart is as a company, a worldwide company, and also in the U.S. with presence all over the U.S., with a large lot in Bill Ricker mass. I don't know why, I mean, Bill Ricker was a very similar type of lot. Puts these cars up for auction, for parts, for intact, for scrap, and all of the above. And you can read that clearly on their website, which is available if anybody wants to look up Copart.
John Beard, one sixty-seven Boxford Road. I'm concerned also about our water supply, with going back to junk cars, which he hasn't really stored there since two thousand thirteen. He had, it was empty for a long time, then he had the new cars, and I think that may be why you approved it last time, because it was less detrimental. But going back to junk cars is, I think, is detrimental to the neighborhood and definitely our water supply, being in the watershed area. There is no containment along that lot where you saw those thousands of cars in that winter picture. So when it rains, it just runs off and then seeps into the soil. I think they should have some testing now just to see how bad it already is. And one, one last thing, I mean, this is, unfortunately, this is the third time he's changed his business in the last thirty years without telling the town. We had to get together in nineteen eighty-seven, then in twenty fifteen, and now, again, four years later. About all.
What is concerning, in two thousand eighteen, the property was ostensibly up for sale through some of the real estate websites. I think somewhat laughably, it said, "Good place for residential development." What speaks against that is that the site, in the wetlands, on the site, outside of the fenced-in area near the Raleigh, actually on the corner of the Raleigh Georgetown State Forest, the newly acquired Mahathy property, where it all comes together, is filled with tire dumps, evidence of old plastic gas cans, oil, quart oil containers, and countless tonnage of buried debris. The tire dump there is probably, varies from ten to twenty feet high and a hundred yards long at least. How much of that is recent, how much of that is in the past, is hard to say without someone who is a better expert than me. There are tires in the wetlands, there are cars in the wetlands, there are batteries on the ground, there are axles, there are differentials. The place outside of the fenced-in area, because obviously, you know, that's, that's private property, is completely filled with debris. It astonishes me that someone could own property in a zone two, a protected DEP area that the town put into place in ninety-five in order to develop new wells, a prerequisite for new wells, as well as the treatment plan. At one time, the well in Boxer Road supplied sixty to eighty percent of all the water in the town. It no longer does because we've diversified. But the fact that this particular site, along with some other, has not been protected according to a very old bylaw in Raleigh of Watership Protection, which was updated with, you know, our own local bylaw, superseded by the state DEP protection of zone twos, astonishes me that this hasn't been twenty-one E, this hasn't been phase one, it hasn't been phase two environmental review, which is typical for anything, that any owner of a property who wants to get a bank involved or wants to sell it, why would you put a property up for sale when you know that not one person could ever build a residential development there, even though the Realtor said it was a perfect place for residential development near, you know, near one thirty-three, near ninety-five, near the train station, all the things, the location that make people want to live in Raleigh. So in other words, I believe that ad in two thousand and eighteen that was existing was just a shill, was just a smokescreen to put in whatever kind of money-making violating use of the zone two and our wellhead protection area. That's all I'm saying.
Gentlemen, we, I've been here for forty-five years. When we purchased this property, there was me, Mrs. LaBelle on one side, DL Peters next to me, and Hemmy Martel across the street from me. It was just all found that he rented out to a man, Mr. Wheeler, to grow, find the products or whatever. And then there was Mr. Smith, and then there was the disposal company, that's all it was. If you drive by my property, you only know that I exist from a fence. You do not see my property from the inside. You might see the back of the building and the width of time, only because of leaves and stuff. I've never had a problem forty-one years at that property with this town. Now, as they say, if I was a detriment to that neighborhood, how did Hemmy Martel sell all that property across the, all those people build those homes and purchase those homes? And if I'm not mistaken, I think the last house lot was sold this year, and a house being built on it. Now, I don't know how many people have been here since seventy-four, but there was a fire lane, and Chief Olgaris was the chief of police when I came here, that, that existed on Newbury Road. And stuff was being left on that property outside coming into me. I don't know how far, where the actual line was, but they were cutting the chains down and bringing debris from in there. I'm not saying it's on my property or whatever. And I, I asked a question about that, if something could be done about that. He says, no, we needed a lane to go with the fire trucks. That's on Newbury Road, which is a half a mile down on Boxer Road, cutting across. Okay? I have never walked that whole property. But I don't know, if you see tires over there, how long they've been there or whatever. That lane right there is the only land I've used since we purchased the place, and that's it. There's forty-four acres of land there, that's approximately ten acres. I have never expanded that area or whatever. Now, there's been developments on the far end of that. I'm sure there was body shops on, on Newbury Street at the time when we first bought the place, people doing repairs back there, which is the back end of my property. So I don't know what was left there or whatever, where this stuff is. I have never, if you think I've walked those forty-four acres, I'm not gonna lie, I have never walked the forty-four acres of it. We purchased that in seventy-four, and again, for forty-one years, I never had a problem with this town. No one came to me and asked about it. Now, all of a sudden, four years, I'm having a problem. Like I said, if I'm a detriment to the neighborhood, I mean, exactly how I was written a bone yard and stuff like that, my yard doesn't look like that, does that look like a bone yard right there? All the front of it, you can't even see me. You don't know I exist. Hundreds of car trips a day.
Yes, sir. John Beard, I understand, Michael, you haven't had a lot of problems before, you can't really see your property from the street, but we're real concerned about the water and the stuff leaking through that property. And even if you may not have dumped those tires or the car pots that are way out in the back, it's your responsibility now. It's been there a long time, it should be cleaned up, and environmental laws have changed greatly in the last forty-one years. And I think that's going to be ultimately what seals your fate. We have, the aquifer that runs under your property and undermine and into the Raleigh Forest supplies two wells, supplies three and five, which supply, together, they provide most of the water in the town. And I don't know if the town is checking for organics and stuff like that. When I give them my water, they just basically check for metals.
Just one thing for the board to note, the, almost half the property is protected wetlands, bordering vegetated wetlands and water bodies, to my knowledge, and there was a letter submitted to this board in two thousand fifteen from Brent Bay Select, the conservation administrator, that he reached out to ask this board to put in provisions to protect not only the wetlands, the buffer zone, whatever was protected on the properties. Of the entire property, I think like twenty-three acres of, you know, about half of its wetlands. And I believe it's been segregated since then, I don't know, if you look at registered deeds, it's confusing. But Mr. Bontos can maybe elucidate that. But all of those water bodies drain to the Mill River, to the well, and the Mill River drains into, as you know, the, you know, the great, the great marsh where people clam. And in other words, Mill River is actually designated by the state as an outstanding resource water because it goes into the estuary, and the estuary is used for people to make a living. And I think to say that just because something is hidden from the street, that is irrelevant. Let's leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman, I move with closed evidence, because everything we've heard is irrelevant to the issue of whether or not there's a violation of an existing order and decision of this court, of this, sorry, this board.
I'll second that.
Okay? I, I mean, nobody here is wrong on what they're saying, but all we're asked to do is to say, did Mr. Ward, is Mr. Ward right or wrong?
Right.
And I think we have the evidence to make our decision on that. So, you know, I don't, I don't need to hear evidence on things that are extraneous to our decision of two thousand fifteen and Mr. Ward's cease and desist.
Okay. You made that motion, this motion is accepted, uh, seconded.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. I think we've heard the concerns and so forth about the water department, but I'm looking at the decision that we made four years ago, that it appears that none of it was carried out according to our decision, and I feel that Mr. Ward's cease and desist...
Should we have the help? I concur. I've read the decision that Attorney Ross has submitted. It's not applicable because that decision of the appeals, of the Land Court talks about an underlying permitted use. This is not an underlying permitted use because it's an expired pre-existing condition. An expired pre-existing use. So it's, it's not, the, the case does not apply. I agree with you. Our decision should stand. Mr. Ward's cease and desist should stand.
Mr. Chairman, the only other comment I would add, which addresses a point made by Mr. Bryant, which is, which is an element of the violation of the original decision. All of the discussion about various issues that may relate to other elements or Mr. Montos' use is not the subject of this hearing. But not only did we vet a lot of those ideas, you're right. I, I went back and read the minutes of all of our sessions as we arrived at that decision, and, and you were actively involved, on Mr. Montos' behalf, in helping us draft the decision. So the verbiage that we ended up with was essentially verbiage which, which you and Mr. Montos found acceptable. Therefore, in my mind, one, the violations that are clear there are that junk cars were put there and, and they weren't supposed to be there. And if you had any intention of changing anything about what was allowed or not allowed, or your interpretation was different from what that decision said, you were supposed to come to us. You didn't do that. That, to me, regardless of everything else that has occurred, puts, puts you in violation of this decision, number one. Number two, the last point, our last condition was, if you did have anything that you decided you wanted to do other than what was here, or if you did something other than what was allowed here, you were in violation. Now, what's incredulous to me about this course of events is that you were able to go to the Board of Selectmen and get a license to actually store junk cars, sell junk cars, do whatever you've been doing with the junk cars, from the Board of Selectmen, in direct contradiction of what this decision said. And evidently, you did that more than once from two night, from two fifteen. Did you have a license each year, is that correct or incorrect?
Yeah, it's correct.
That's correct, okay.
No reason.
Right. And, and so I, that, that to me is another case of where you should have said, hey, we're thinking of doing this, instead of just running over to the Board of Selectmen and saying, oh, by the way, I, I need to do this, doesn't make any difference, I have a decision that, that says I can't do it, or I shouldn't do it, I don't even know what it really means, just give me a new license. And the Board of Selectmen said, okay. It's incredulous to me, absolutely incredulous, that that kind of action should occur. That there wouldn't have been some element of conversation, regardless. Regardless, I don't see how we can do anything except uphold the current decision. Minimally, you should, you could, you'd be subject to a cease and desist because you didn't come to us. Forget the other stuff. Forget the debate about whether junk is allowed or not. You didn't come to us. That alone, to me, is grounds to uphold a cease and desist, not the way this one is written, but another one. And I frankly think if you're going to dispute what we're here saying, what we're saying now to uphold the cease and desist, you're going to have to go back to the Land Court. And then I don't think you'll find, I agree with, with Bob completely, that's, that, that Rosenfeld decision is an interesting decision, but it relates to a totally unrelated approved use, an agricultural use in that particular case, not just, not just a use that was allowed or not allowed under Baron. So I would support, I would support, I would make a motion to uphold the cease and desist as issued.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll pull, we expect this decision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're heading motion to, close the hearing. So move. Second. Motion for majority, please, close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, members.
Nineteen oh-six, was four ninety-one Main Street. We have a letter here. Sir. We're still doing business.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Dear Lisa.
John, do you want to come out?
Well, all is well with you. We're going to be pulling up applications from the DPA. We have reconfigured some things and plans, so we no longer need any damage, thank goodness. Oh, let me see attached letter. Is the letter from Graham?
Yes, but you don't have to read it.
No, we don't, we don't need to know this.
All right, okay. Okay. It seems that, from what I understand, is they let them back to the planning board and they've made, drawn up new plans and the planning board has approved their plans, so it's going to, so they don't need anything from us, so they request to withdraw.
We accept.
Make a motion, we have a motion to accept the withdrawal. Accept the withdrawal. Make a motion, we accept the withdrawal.
I'll second it. I can't hold on that. He wasn't involved. I'll second it.
You were on it.
I was. Yeah.
Okay. I thought you wasn't even on it, was I?
No, you weren't the.
No, you was on the road.
One, two, three. I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
Adhere.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
I don't want to talk to me.
Okay.
Don't look at me.